I'll just refresh you on what we have been doing with this. This first slide is a downloadable tracking template. This is actually, will be on the website and downloadable for small businesses. It's a very simple Excel spreadsheet with macros running in the background. This will be very simple. All the business needs to do is plug in the name of the employer and employee number, if that's what they use to track. Plug in the accrued and used. It can save time for the relevant period and the sheet will calculate for them. This will be downloadable from the website. The next page is a screenshot of a portion of what we're calling an affirmation. And this is something that small businesses can use to tell us if they have five or fewer employees. This will help us connect with those businesses to be able to directly provide better resources and assistance to them. You will notice on the screen that the form is set up to provide this affirmation for firms with five or fewer employees, but we can change that number. I know Councilmember Orsoni or Staff Direction specifically talks about businesses with 15 or fewer, and that's certainly something that we can change on this form because we want to be able to address the need in the community. The next slide talks about leveraging the existing networks that I mentioned earlier. There are several that exist already in the city. We're already plugged into them, either through individuals who are sitting on the staff implementation team or through meeting specifically with those groups now and into the future. So Business Technical Assistance, the Business Advisory Group link, which is Liquor in the City, the Minnesota Unified Certification Program, the Somali Community Business Forum. And we're also identifying new users as department leadership informs us. We have a group in the Health Department that we are connecting with at the request of Health Department staff. So as these new networks are identified, we are connecting with them as quickly as possible. And we, again, I mentioned, we assigned the staff inside the Civil Rights Department whose one of her particular assignments will be to work with small businesses, provide them with the support that they need or refer them to support inside the city and inside the city Small C and Big C that they need. Another staff direction that we want to talk about is one, and I apologize, I don't recall whose this was, but it was to address the effect on the business license of failure to comply with the Sick and Save Time Ordinance. The Business License Division was especially called out to help address this. And if we flip to the next page, you'll note that we have a Business Licensing Director on the Staff Implementation Team, Grant Wilson, is here in the room today. And he has mined his ordinance and provided the language that I think will address that particular direction. And I'll start reading here. I'm going to read from the bottom up. But it shall be the responsibility of the licensee to maintain and operate the business in compliance with all applicable laws and ordinances. This is from the Minneapolis City Ordinance 259 to 250. And it says here that failure to comply with any of these standards and conditions shall be adequate grounds for the denial, refusal to renew, revocation, or suspension of said license. And the staff in the Business Licensing Division and the Implementation Team believe that this language in the current ordinance covers this via the slide, the language that you see on the slide. One of the other staff directions was addressed specifically to the Intergovernmental Relations Department. That was to address the potential increase in rates as a result of nonprofit employers implementing the ordinance, especially around rate increases for long-term care, care for people with disabilities, and childcare. And in consultation with the staff from IGR, and I don't believe anybody from IGR is here this morning, but they have been an ongoing member of the Staff Implementation Team, Ms. Bergman has indicated that if there are follow-on questions related to this, that she's happy to address those. But they are working through the policy development process in anticipation of the next legislative session. They began working on this issue earlier this year, and they will work on this through the end of the legislative session and going forward. But IGR has this on their radar, and it is a priority for them. The next staff direction had to do with existing paid time off and paid sick time policies, specifically directing staff to do some research and to find out if, and come back with a recommendation on whether or not these policies can be accounted for within Title II, Chapter 40. And I want to tell you that the staff did put together a recommendation. However, in the time from preparing the recommendation through today, it has been acknowledged by the stakeholders, both the business community and the employee community and staff, that there were certain other technical amendments that would be appropriate. So in addition to addressing this existing paid time off policy issue, Assistant City Attorney Susan Trammell is also going to address some of those other technical amendments in the agenda item that immediately follows this one. So our objectives for the next quarter is that we are going to continue to develop our responses to our frequently asked questions. You may remember, the ordinance requires some rulemaking and other explanatory work to happen over the next several months. We have, will approach our rulemaking in the form of FAQs or frequently asked questions. Those are in the process of being drafted. We expect those to be published in October. And with various stakeholders, including representatives of the Formal Workplace Partnership Group and others, we will begin to engage, engage the stakeholders from November through March. We're also starting to develop our enforcement procedures, and I'll talk a little bit about that. I often get asked the question, well, how is this new ordinance going to be enforced? And if you remember, in the ordinance, it's at Section 40.90, or it is in the current ordinance. I don't know what it's going to look like by the end of the morning, but there is a section on implementation that talks about, and I might have it. That there's, for the first year of the implementation of this ordinance, the enforcement will be more along the lines of mediation and consultation and really working with businesses so they can correct their, the violations that are, that are discovered. It is at 40.90. For the first 12 months, the department must only mediate disputes and issue warnings and notices to correct. And then in that subsequent 12-month period and going forward, we would start to do our regular enforcement. There's another section that people ask me about, and that is, how will the department work with other state and local agencies? That is addressed in the ordinance as well at 40.110. And it gives the director in the department broad authority to work with our relevant city departments, state and federal agencies, divisions, departments, bureaus, institutions, et cetera, to promote and enforce the provisions in the chapter. But specifically related to the enforcement, there are really three kinds of enforcement, I think, that the department is considering. Of course, individuals who believe they've been subject to a violation of the chapter can file a complaint. We are going to work with organizations who will identify violators and victims and refer those individuals to our department. This is working well in jurisdictions that already have sick time ordinances. And also, the ordinance at 40.110 also, again, referencing the strategic enforcement where the department can work with other organizations and agencies to look at where companies may frequently violate labor laws. We can do some strategic enforcement relative, relative to that. We also are beginning to do some education and with employees and the general public. We'll start that in late winter, early spring. We'll launch our full website with all of those downloadable documents that I mentioned earlier in my presentation. And of course, we will seek and utilize the services of the Workplace Advisory Committee that you all approved about a month ago, that recruitment process is currently ongoing. Application closes on October 14th. We'll go through the vetting process that we typically do for that next 30 to 60 days, but we hope to have that, our plan is to have that group seated and working by January 2017. There's contact information on the screen. I don't think that you have it in this presentation. We'll make sure that the clerk gets it. But there are, there are several ways to contact the staff through these websites. Staff that are working on the Sick and Save Time Ordinance through 311, which has been a great partner with this ordinance already. Most of the feedback that I mentioned in the pie charts early has come through 311. We have an email address. We also have a website. That is it. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Director Corbell. I am not seeing any comments up here, so I would just like to say, clearly you've all been very busy. Thank you for the thorough work on this. I know it's very important to a lot of our business community, and so seeing all this outreach and all this information put out there is really great and appreciate the presentation. So with that, I will move to receive and file. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstain, the motion carries. Thank you very much. And we will move on to item number four, Amendments to the Workplace Regulations Ordinance. We are joined today from our City Attorney's Office by Susan Trammell. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Johnson and members of the committee. Susan Trammell from the City Attorney's Office. As part of one of the staff directions that came through council, when we passed the Sick and Safe Time Ordinance, staff was directed to look at existing policies and how they may fit within this ordinance. Initially, staff was planning to address these situations through frequently asked questions, but through contacts with the business community and others, the decision was made to proceed with ordinance amendments. And so I have those before you, and I will walk through the various changes that are coming forward. The first section that is being changed is 40.210. That is the accrual of sick and safe time section. And in that section, there are two changes that were going to be dealt with in frequently asked questions, but due to inquiries from business community and they wanted some assurances in the ordinance, we determined to add them at this time. The first is to clarify that as you accrue time at the 1 to 30-hour rate, that accrual is in hour increments only. This is similar to that which is in St. Paul's ordinance. And so if you've worked 40 hours, you have one hour on the book. And when you hit 60 hours, you have two hours on the book, that kind of thing. So you don't, at the end of a week, say, have a portion or a fraction of that hour. The other question that was coming up, which was to be dealt with in the frequently asked questions, but which is now in ordinance, is to when do employers need to record this time on the books? And we determined that that would be by any current payroll practices that they use in their industry or other policies that are existing, so long as it's no less frequently than once a month. And so that's inserted in 40.210. Also in 40.210 addresses the issue of front loading, which is an idea that is an alternative to sick and safe time accrual. So under the language that's adopted here and proposed today, this will conform us substantially with St. Paul's idea of front loading as well. Just want to make that clear. We're trying to gain some consistency with St. Paul's so it's easier for employers. So employers may satisfy the accrual provision if they provide in the first year of an employee's employment 48 hours minimum of sick and safe time, once they've worked their initial 90 days. And then they can use that throughout that first calendar year of employment. And then if they provide an 80 hours every year thereafter at the beginning of the year for that employee's use. If they do that, they have then satisfied the accrual provisions that were otherwise contained in 40.210. So it's an alternative.
I just, I'm going to stop you there and ask a quick question on that. So for providing at least 80 hours of sick and safe time beginning each subsequent calendar year, is that an accrual up until 80 hours at a minimum? Because I know under the typical ordinance here, an employer may satisfy the section under, I'm looking at 40, 210E, an employer may satisfy by providing 48 hours following the 90 days, which is to your first bullet point that matches up, and providing at least 80 hours at the beginning of, hold on a second here. Got this right. I guess my question for you is, so in the second year, they would automatically then be providing 80 hours?
At the beginning of the calendar year.
At the beginning, gotcha. Okay.
Yes, Chair Johnson. And this eliminates the carryover provision. So if you provide the 80 as a front loaded, you do not then carry over anything that you may have had remaining from the front loaded year before.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Sure.
And Councilmember Fry is in here as well. Oh, never mind, forget.
Those are the changes to 40.210. I now want to move to 40.220, which is the use of accrued sick and safe time. The first thing that we did in this section was to clarify compensation, and a lot of questions had come up about the compensation. And so we altered that language in 40.220G. And what it says is that employers must compensate the employee at the same hourly rate with the same benefits as the employee's regular rate of pay for the hours the employee was scheduled to work during the time the employee uses their accrued sick and safe time. Now, the intent is to then define in the definitions what rate of pay means. So the hourly rate of pay is a new definition, and it says the hourly rate for an hourly employee or an equivalent rate for an exempt employee. And then it goes on to discuss the inclusions and the exclusions from that rate of pay. So to address some concerns that council members have had before and to specifically address how we had included in the ordinance previously, the definition includes for rate of pay shift differentials outside of overtime pay, that's at one and a half. And it specifically excludes tips and commissions in the definition. So those have been removed from Section 40.220. These are now included in the definition. So rate of pay will include shift differentials, but rate of pay will continue to exclude tips, commissions, and bonuses. And it will also exclude expense reimbursements, premium payments that are at least one and one-half times the normal rate, cash or other valuables that are in the nature of a gift that's given to the employee, and then profit sharing plans or other thrift or savings plan contributions, and then plans that, contributions that are made for retirement plans. So all those things are not included in the definition of rate of pay. The next change that we made was to 40.270. And 40.270A was amended, is it proposed to be amended? And this has to do with employer records. And the required records, after a lot of discussion on this topic, it's been simplified to clarify that employers need to track the hours for non-exempt employees. And the frequently asked questions will continue to address that for an exempt employee, it's presumed that the employee works 40 hours a week unless otherwise arranged. The department needs to have the hours worked and the hours of leave available and the hours of leave used in order to investigate. And so it continues to contain those three requirements. We did, however, delete a section of 40.270, and that has to do with the tracking of employees who occasionally work in the city. This was done because of employer concerns and because of the issue of having alternative policies such as the front loading. It doesn't assist the employer if they have an alternative such as front loading and they front load all their employees if another ordinance section continues to require them to track the movement in and out of the city. Frequently asked questions will continue to address what records will be necessary because there are other provisions in the ordinance that if a violation is alleged and the employer does not have sufficient records to show what is owing to the employee, then there's a presumption against the employer. Okay? So even though this provision is being removed, because there will be times where you won't need to track because you're front loading, for example, employers who don't front load and who don't accrue to their employees regardless of where they work, at least 1 to 30, those employers will still need to track in order to prove that they have provided to the employee who works occasionally in the city what it is they're owed. So these will all be flushed out in frequently asked questions, even though it's being removed for the purposes of not requiring employers with these alternative leave policies that are sufficient to satisfy the ordinance to track changes. The last change that we made is again, in addition, or in response to the staff direction about addressing other sick and safe time policies and other leave policies. This is to Section 40.310, and we added some clarifying language that makes it very clear that the city is not discouraging policies that provide for greater accrual, regardless of whether those are sick and safe time policies or other policies. We want to actually encourage employers to provide greater sick and safe time protections to their employees and other protections to their employees. So that language in 40.310A is just to clarify that. We did make a change in subsection B of 40.310, which relates to these other leave policies again, and that staff direction, such that it clears up that employers are not required to provide additional sick and safe time if they have other leave policies that are sufficient to meet the accrual requirements under 40.210, and that leave that they give their employees may be used for the same purposes and under the same conditions as provided for under 40.220. Under that situation, they are deemed to have a sufficient policy, and they need not provide additional sick and safe time. And those are all of the changes that we are proposing. I would stand for questions if you have any. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Any questions? All right, not seeing any. Thank you for the presentation. With that, we will go ahead and move a passage of these amendments to the ordinance, meaning Title II, Chapter 40. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor? Oh, Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Susan Trammell of Velma Corbell, as well as advocates on both sides, including Take Action, as well as the business community, for working through a lot of these very complex logistics. You know, the overall goal here was to allow employers to exceed the requirements set forth in the policy while simultaneously ensuring that everybody, literally everybody, met the baseline, and I think that we've done that. So this is, and then the second piece was, some of these, some of these provisions were just to further comply with St. Paul's ordinance, which was recently passed. So, thank you, and I would ask that you support the changes.
Thank you, Councilmember Fry. Any additional discussion? All right, not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all those abstain, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I also wanted to mention that we have been joined by Council Vice President Gordon. And we will now move on to the staff direction by Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This staff direction that should be in front of you right now is related to, it's a review of marketplace and businesses that are somewhat like Airbnb, Couchsurfing, HomeAway, and others. And basically, we're going to need to figure out a plan going forward as we come across these major events like the Super Bowl and the NCAA Final Four to determine how we allow this new and innovative business model to continue to function in our city. And we very much want it to continue to function while simultaneously offering a baseline regulation and equity in the rest of the, in other similar industries. There is really no specific ask here. We're not outlining exactly what's in the policy at this point. All we're doing is asking staff to begin the process that we're, you know, undoubtedly going to have to take up. I'll be honest, I really did not want to take this up, but I think that ultimately it's probably necessary.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Fry. Any discussion? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, just a couple of grammatical things related to the staff direction, nothing major, and hopefully it's just Council Fry, Councilmember Fry, these are just friendly amendments. But second paragraph, the work group shall be include, we should probably take out the B, and the last sentence on second paragraph there, our key stakeholders in our marketplace, maybe the R should be taken out, but that's about it, though.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Councilmember Yang's input. The B should be taken out, the R should be taken out as well. And I would like to amend the staff direction to include City Attorney's Office as well, which I see has been missing. So the work group shall include representatives from the City Coordinator's Office, Community Planning and Economic Development, Finance and Property Services, Intergovernmental Relations, Regulatory Services, comma, City Attorney's Office, and Meet Minneapolis. So just adding City Attorney's Office to that paragraph.
Perfect. All right, the amended staff direction is before. So do we have any additional comments, questions, discussion? Not seeing any. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain, the staff direction carries. Thank you, Councilmember Fry. With that, we are moving on to the reports of our committees. First up, we have our Community Development and Regulatory Services chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. There are 10 items that are coming forward tomorrow for approval. Item number one is the modification. It's modification number 126, which says something, to the Ninth Street and Hennepin Avenue redevelopment plan. This is to facilitate the purchase that's already happened of the Solera Building by the Hennepin Theater Trust. Item two is a license application for the AC Hotel. Items three and four and five are also license and consumer services issues. Item six is a new license application. Item seven is requirements under Business Made Simple. Item eight is a rental license reinstatement. Nine are just a couple of minor changes to our home opportunity and down payment and closing assistance program. And item number 10 is our street cafe pilot program supplement. With that, I'll answer any questions on items one through 10.
Great. Not seeing any questions. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Moving on to our Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chair Johnson. We have three items that will be coming forward. They're all relatively small grants that also went through the Ways and Means. Two of them are with the Minnesota Department of Health for additional lead poisoning intervention work, and one is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation that we'll be receiving to provide tree planting on Department of Transportation property. All right, happy to take questions, but that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Not seeing any questions, so we will move on to our Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have six items that will come up for council approval on Friday. The first item is a joint powers agreement between the BCA and 911. The second item is a travel expense donation acceptance. Third item is a contract amendment with the NPHA. Fourth item is a contract amendment with Hennepin County for a detox van. Fifth item is a contract amendment with Stillwater Emergency Management. And the sixth item is a travel expense donation acceptance. And, Mr. Chair, if I can just make a comment, and I said this in the Ways and Means Committee, but, you know, with regards to item number five, which says Stillwater Emergency Management, that is not the municipality, that is an actual organization that's separate from the municipality itself.
Thank you for the clarification in the report. I am not seeing any questions or comments, so thank you, Councilmember Yang. We'll move on to Transportation and Public Works with Chair Reich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee is forwarding 19 items for full council consideration. Items one through four are to support the budgets and activities of our special service districts. Item five is similarly for one of our municipal parking lots in South Minneapolis. Item six is the Downtown Cadrean Improvement Project Amendment Contract for Architectural Historical Review. Item seven is replacement of quitclaim deeds as listed. Item eight is the Urban Forestry Policy Update. We had a good conversation on that presentation. Item nine is a passage resolution declaring September 22nd, 2016, World Car Free Day in the city of Minneapolis. The following items are all referred to the reports of the Ways and Means Committee, and they all represent activities of, standard activities of the department. I'll stand for questions, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Reich. I'm not seeing any questions, so we'll move on to our Ways and Means Committee Report with our Chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ways and Means will bring forward 15 items for consideration on Friday. City Attorney's Office has five items on the agenda. Two are workers' compensation claim settlements, and then there are three legal settlements. There are two gift acceptance items, and then one grant acceptance from Greater Twin Cities United Way for the Talking is Teaching Talk, Read, Sing Campaign. We have a contract amendment with Blackstone Contractors for the Powderhorn Gateway Art Restoration Project, and a contract with CPMI to be the city's project representative for a suite of services related to the new downtown office space building project. We also have the medical plan options for Medicare-eligible retirees of the city, a contract with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, regional analysis of impediments to the fair housing addendum work. From the Information Technology Department, we have two contracts, and the final item is appointed position from City Coordinator's Office, known as the Chief Resiliency Officer. Those are the 15 items we have on Friday. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. I am not seeing any questions, so we'll move on to our Zoning and Planning Committee with Chair Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three items from zoning and planning. Item number one is an alley vacation. Item number two is an ordinance amending our zoning code to amend the pedestrian-oriented Overly District on Central Avenue Northeast. And item number three would be updating our zoning code passing an ordinance related to Skyway Design.
Thank you, Councilmember Bender. Not seeing any questions. So last but not least, we will turn to our Audit Committee with our Chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had our Audit Committee meeting just yesterday. We received reports from our auditor, first in regards to system access post-employment, and second in regards to how we pay invoices, challenges, and importantly, some opportunities in how we can improve this process. But the single item that we are referring to council on Friday is the memo regarding our state auditor findings on people's soft access.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano. Not seeing any questions, so with all our business completed, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1762.53]